Andre, you with us?
Oh, I am. Hello, hello.
Juliet, give me a smile.
I'm smiling. I'm just not, I can't have the video and my iPad working at the same time. So if I have, if, I have echo or you guys can't hear me, so no video.
Okay.
I found out the hard way it doesn't work.
Alright, so I shall call a meeting to order at 5:30.
Okay, wait a minute, let me grab my notepad.
How'd it go today, Andre?
It goes, it goes. It's, it was a busy hectic day, a lot, a lot going on. But what about on your end?
Same thing.
Busy is good, right?
Yes, it is. I wish I was a little younger.
You gotta find a silver lining somewhere these days.
Good grief, it's gonna be one of them nights, isn't it?
And I heard what you said, Leanne, but you don't look a day over 30, so stop.
I am trying to get to my folder. I'm ready.
Okay. Alright.
Does everybody, do, you guys have the notes I sent you with the red highlights?
Yes. And you know what? I didn't realize. I printed it out. When it comes out, it doesn't show it.
Oh.
So I guess we'll, I'll have to go back, go through it a little bit, if you don't mind. But before we do that, roll call. Everybody was, is here and present. Counselor Bumgarner and Counselor, oh yeah, Paca. That's Paca and Leanne, Counselor O'Bree. Okay. Approval of the minutes from our August 11th meeting. I read them over. Everything seemed to be fine.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Did you second?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So... Did you, um, did you pull yours up, Andre, with the changes?
I did, um, in, just in terms of the, within the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, just to recap, you know, in the last, maybe six months or so, we've worked on these, on these rules. We've had several referrals come our way, you know, during that time. And, you know, nonetheless, we've reviewed chronologically, you know, from rule one through, I think, what rule? I, I'll pull it up, um, through rule... Eight, nine, rule through rule 14. And we've made some changes. I think that improve, will greatly improve the flow of our meetings. Will, uh, call, spells out proper decorum and weighs the mayor and the council handles a lack of decorum, which, you know, it goes without stating, points during this council have been an issue. And, you know, I, and I'll state that on the record, but I do think that these rules address that. And ultimately, you know, behavior is up to individual counselors, but, you know, I think there are some teeth in these rules so that everyone can treat, will treat each other in a fair, in a proper manner. And so I, I believe that's a very important cornerstone of our council is, you know, good behavior and getting along. I think we work best when we work collaboratively and cooperatively. In, you know, so, you know, without hogging all the air, you know, I'm happy with these changes. And unless there's anything that, you know, Counselor Parker or you, Madam Chair, would like to discuss in greater detail before, you know, we voted out committee, I'd be happy to do so. But, you know, based on the changes that we've already approved, I'm very comfortable sending this to the, to the entire council.
Counselor Paca, did you say you were fine too?
Not yet. I, I want to go back. I, I, I'm almost there. There's a couple of issues that were brought up. Because at the last meeting, they brought up an email from August, August of last year, which is the citizens petition. And then I have one other thing I want to bring up, and that would be about debate. I think we...
Which page are you on?
Okay, hold that thought.
Alright.
Rules eight would be debate, I believe, if I'm probably wrong, but I'm trying to look at it now. Uh, no, I was right. Which would be page seven.
Page seven, okay.
Under debate.
Under debate, okay.
So, I think we need a time limit. I don't know if you guys want to agree with that or not, but I think after each, each person should go two rounds. We all try to talk. And then after 20 minutes of debate, I think we need to move it because we've spent, on the last serious topics, three hours, almost three hours in debate on one topic when we had other things on the agenda. We can't do that because we're not moving business forward.
Right. Alright, you know, I did, I was hoping to run in and have time to pull up those, those rules that we actually had changed at, at a council meeting. And I think that's where they belong here. Can you hold on for just a second? Let me see if I can pull them up.
Okay.
I'll have to go out of here because I only have the one computer, but I'll be right back. I'll try to get out of here.
Leanne, you can't log out of the meeting because you're, you're the host in the chair.
Okay.
Is there something I can look up for you or?
He said, Conrad sent it to me today. I don't know if he CC'd it to anybody else.
No.
No.
And he's got, and that's the other thing. It has to go to all three of us if they want us to make a change or not. If, you know...
What it was, now, it might have been done incorrectly, but at a council meeting, there was a discussion about how long somebody could talk about something. And there was a motion put on the floor and it was passed. And I think that would fit right into what we're discussing now, but I don't have the damn thing.
I am trying to...
Let me look through my file here and see if possibly I can find it. I got the biggest file in the whole wide world here. I mean, we can just go ahead and do it, but it was already done and approved. So I thought if we use that, it would probably make things a little bit easier.
Done and approved under what? The last council me, I mean, last?
No, no, this was, this was some time back that...
Old Rules Committee minutes?
No, it was council meeting minutes. I mentioned it at our last council meeting and nobody, I thought he had sent it to everybody and he didn't.
No, that's the one, the email from August 2019. Alright, hold on. I gotta find my phone. Oh, I'm such a dummy.
Wait a minute, I can probably do it that way too. Let me check my email because he just sent it a little bit ago. Okay, I think I got it here. Now, let's see if I can pull it up. He's got it on the Rules Committee suggestions. I'm not finding it. I don't know why not. It was an email. No. Well, let's just do our own and let's go back to page seven of 11. And your idea is to put some limitations on the, the time that, that "Any counselor who desires, who desires to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the presiding officer shall confine themselves to the question under debate. Avoid interjecting a personal note into debate or lowering, lowering, yeah, lowering to improper motives of members at the risk of being ruled out of order."
Wait a minute, is that something that was emailed to you?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
No, no, this is, this is what's in here.
That's, that's not what's in there, is it?
Yeah.
Page on seven?
Yeah.
Seven, page seven. Now, right there where it says, where it says, "At risk of being ruled out of order", right there, we could put length of presentation to be no more than three minutes.
Do I have the right ones? Please tell me I have the right ones.
You did. On page seven, under debate. That's what you told us to go to.
Okay.
Got it?
Is that the, is it there, is it section E, right? Or is this another?
Alright, section E, debate. And what you're suggesting is that we put a, a time limit on, on their presentation. You know, it's just...
I mean, time limit for the whole entire debate because I don't think we should do more than, it's between 20 and 30 minutes, so that at least gives us each five minutes per person total. I mean, 10 minutes, 10, it's actually 90 minutes, but we gotta cut it down. Because if we spend more than 20 to 30 minutes on a topic, we, we throw ourselves off. So, under section E, do you have five letters, I mean, five numbers, numerals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, didn't you put a time limitation in here?
I do, and I'm just wanted to see if that, if you guys are okay with that, that all of us go around twice?
Well, I think if you put the presentation can be no longer than three minutes and, and responses in order, no longer than three minutes. What do you think, Andre?
Do, currently, is there a time limit?
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. But I think we can do that though, because...
Oh, wait a minute, next page. "Counselors are limited to three minutes each time they speak on a question. After each counselor has spoken, if a counselor has a second question, that counselor is allowed three minutes and then yield the floor to another counselor."
Oh, I did put it in.
Yep. It was on the next page. But I think, um, I think we could add that when you...
Oh, you know what it was? It wasn't in red pen, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, well, because I think it's already, it's already here.
Okay.
Oh, no, I didn't put it in red pen, you're right.
Um, it's okay. Uh, rule, E, E. Okay, um...
I think this is great. I think the only thing we need to do is put a limit on the person that puts the article on the floor.
The emotion?
Yeah, it says, "Any counselor who desires to speak shall address the chair." You excuse me, I've been waiting for a call. Just one second. Hello, this is Leanne. Forget it. Okay, it says, "During discussion or debate, no counsel shall speak unless recognized by the mayor."
Right.
"Any counsel who desires, who desires," we got too many oohs, "to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the presiding officer shall confine themselves to the question under debate and shall speak no longer than three minutes." Presentation will be no longer than three minutes. What do you think?
Um, no, I would put it under F. So...
F?
F.
Limits of debate?
Yeah, so the mayor shall make the maker of the motion the opportunity to speak first for no more than...
Wait a minute, so we're adding another one?
No, we won't add it under debate.
No, I meant limits of debate. Andre, are you writing something up?
Yeah, so, so where it says F, limits of debate.
Yes.
Number one, "The mayor shall allow the maker of a motion the opportunity to speak first for..." So, where it's a period, to speak first?
Yep.
In the period and first, for no more than three minutes.
For, oh. Come on, really?
Yeah.
No, 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 not you, my computer, for no more than three minutes.
Yep.
Alright, that's highlighted in red.
And then, "Counselors are limited to three minutes each time they speak on a question." I think that's gonna make a big difference.
So every, every remark is now confined to three minutes.
Yeah.
That's huge.
Which, that's huge, and, and I think it has to. Because that, and the arguments have to be, if there's an argument, that it has to be something that's related to the debate. We can't have it not related to the debate. And I know we said that, but it's almost like, I don't know if they, if anybody realized, we gotta make sure it's to that topic only. We can't add any other topic.
And the one before, the paragraph before it says, "Shall confine, confine themselves to the question under debate."
I, that makes sense, okay.
Whatever goes on the floor, that's what you talk about, but that's all.
Well, you know, and, and I'm not comparing us to Congress, but, you know, you see these congressional hearings. They have a time limit.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, they, so in most other forms of government, there are limits on debate.
There has to be.
And, and I think in many respects, it, it's not going to hurt our, our business. I think it will enhance it because we can then focus our remarks on what matters. And no one can stall because they simply disavow the issue.
Yep.
Right. But I think, other than that, I think everything's okay.
I do, I read through it twice.
I, I know the other thing they were talking about is section 11, citizens' petitions. This was, this has been a headache for three to four years. This is actually year three. So when they, when we have citizens' petitions and we have to respond to them, we should only be responding to what they're saying. And that, I think, because they want to ask, I know people want to ask questions of that person, but the question has to be, is the same thing as what we're doing under debate. It's gotta be the same verbiage, I think. Because we...
I think we did that, wait a minute.
I thought we did that, but I'm looking at it now. And I don't think we have that response to citizens' petition in here. Oh, well, no, we don't. Yeah, we do. You know, sometimes I read this so many times that I, I forget where it's at.
Yeah.
Honestly, I, I can't think of an area we haven't covered.
I think in here somewhere, it says, "You can ask a question for clarification, but not to debate."
Yeah, it says that, "There shall be no questions or cross-examination by members of the council except for questions necessary to clarify the citizen's intent."
Right.
But that's it. But sometimes we end up doing a whole lot more and I feel like we're actually in a debate with the citizen.
Well...
Maybe that's just me.
No, I, I, but in here, we, oh, where is it?
See, that's what I, we've looked at this so many times.
And if I'm not mistaken, these were, um, the Rules Committee last year or two years ago. They went back and made some changes after they had approved the rules initially. And I think this was the section that they revamped that we as a council subsequently...
Approved, yes. Well, yes, that was a very heated debate on that one. Not amongst us all. It was more of, a previous counselor did not agree with the ruling of that. He wasn't very happy with us. And it made sense that we only have it point blank, this, this, and this.
So you, you would like to make additional changes to the section?
I don't know what we should add to it.
In here somewhere, it says that you just can ask a question for clarification. That's all.
It's in section B.
You don't debate with somebody that's come in to speak.
Or cross-examine, yeah, that's precisely, and that's...
It's in here.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's there. It's on page, um, the last page.
I know, I, I know I read that.
Yeah.
It's section B of the last page of 11. But I don't know if we need to make the verbiage stronger, is my, is what I'm trying to get at. I don't know if we need to make it stronger, or is it, it's okay?
Cross-examination is as strong as it can get.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
You know, we, what we need to do is, we need to concentrate on the time for debate. All of us can easily, if, if a counselor is badgering somebody that comes in to speak, it's our responsibility to say point of order and end it.
Right.
So I, we have the ability to do that. And I think, I think we may...
I forget, the censor, censorship language is contained in, in the rules now. You know, we have this in our, you know, added.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that was not in our previous rules. There was no explicit mention of censorship. And that's, you know, something that the mayor and the council as a whole can opt to do if there's a counselor that is acting.
You know, the sad thing is, the, our first two years, we didn't need it. Yeah, you know, we did really very well as a group. And unfortunately, now we do need it. And it's not any, it's not any particular person, it's the world we're in right now. And I, people are acting a lot differently than they would normally. So we have to try to rein it in and have a better situation. So, Juliet, I think you've done a great job with this and if, I'd like to we, you know, we move forward to present this to the council.
Okay. Leave it as a...
Andre?
I'm fine.
I'll second it and we can debate it further, but I'm, you know, I'll second the motion if that's, you're making one.
Okay. What do you think, Pac?
I'm fine with it. I mean, I just wanted us to go over one more time and vote on it before we submit it to them. Because I, I just figured we'd take one more look at it to see if there's anything else that would pop up on our end. Because we just never know. I know it's longer than what we've had before, but it's, we have to be very specific.
Yeah.
And am I leaving it with the red changes so that we could submit it to everybody so they could see what's going on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless, you know what? I think, so we have 30 minutes. I know this is crazy. I'd be happy to do it. I think I did it the fir, the first, maybe the first meeting. But we can do a read-through just to see if there's any spelling, you know, where we...
Oh, no, that's fine, please, because I'll have it open. Then you tell me if I misspelt something.
So, uh, so you know, sometimes we'll make, and the council will, will read through that whole motion. So what I'll do is I'll read through the whole rules if you'd like, um, Chair, Chairman, Chair O'Bree. And to just see if we have any mistakes, spelling errors, or, you know, whatever.
Well, I figured tonight we just asked, I think that's wonderful if you'll do that. But I thought tonight we would just add, if we could add it to the agenda for the next meeting and then go in with this for everybody.
Oath to the council.
She wants to submit, yeah, that makes sense. So we go through this, we approve it tonight. After Andre, Andre, if you find something, I'll fix it.
We're gonna approve it subject to a rereading for errors.
Okay, wait a minute, let me write that down. Oh my goodness, what did I do with my pen? Okay, so I was gonna say approval of the... Who, you approved, you moved the motion?
Yeah.
Change, all changes.
Subject to...
Subject to, um, rereading for any clerical errors.
For clerical errors.
And you, Counselor O'Bree, you said it and Counselor Bumgardner seconded and Counselor O'Bree, Chairman O'Bree, Chairperson O'Bree.
Yes.
You gotta ask the question. All, you gotta ask the all-in question, all in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we'll do that. I'll ask for it to be on the next agenda. We'll do our presentation.
Yay. You know, it took us many months to do this, right? I mean, not just this one, but the last one too, and...
And I, I will ask, it'll depend, I'm sure, on what we have, but, you know, it might not be a bad idea. I know it would take time, but we probably should read this. You know, if they can allow us the time, because most of, most of people don't even read it.
No.
You know? Well, I will talk with John and...
When the council votes to approve it, because of... When we, when the council votes to approve it, because of the whole council will have to, that they don't read it for the first time at the meeting, that they really take the time to read it ahead of time and come prepared with questions, or maybe even ask questions ahead of the meeting. That way, we don't have to debate, you know, that entire meeting. We can-
Right.
Just talk about the thing, you know, the things we'd like to change and that we're certain changing.
I agree.
Okay. I think we're pretty good at this point. I, I think they can see that we're trying to get across that we need a little bit more structure than we have in the past. And a little bit of time limitations, more decorum, and respect for the mayor.
Yes.
I think that's where we really are. So, uh, can you think of anything else we should talk about?
No, I think, I think we did a good job.
I think we did. Thank you very much for doing all the typing and all. That was wonderful.
No problem.
Would have been lost without that.
And Counselor Baumgartner, for your suggested changes in the beginning, that helps. With all of us working together, we all had ideas of how we want to see it and-
I'll be nice to each other.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, this is, this is great. And, you know, I, I hope, you know, to, I'm sure in the future, we'll get referrals. But, you know, I hope, you know, this committee, we can work together in some capacity again.
This should control it a little bit, hopefully. All right, and remember, it's pretty much our responsibility, I think, as the Rules Committee, that if we see something being abused, we have to-
Speak up.
We have to speak up.
And that makes sense, because it'll also maybe be referred to us anyways to figure out if something was done wrong. The only thing I'm going to worry about, no, we're going to take the censorship from the Roberts rules. That's why we put it in that way.
Yeah.
Because some, somebody's going to ask, potentially.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm prepared to defend it, so.
We shall.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, shall I hear a motion to adjourn at, I don't know what time it is?
The motion.
Okay.
A second?
I second, and it's 6:02. Wow, that was good. Now, Andre, you can get something to eat before the real meeting.
I know, right?
You ever watch him? He's always going down the side to get a little something to eat.
I watch him. That's why my, well, one, my video does not work and talking at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
But two, I can go get something to drink and get something to eat real quick and nobody can hear me chewing.
I, I wish it could have been on the night he told the mayor she had luscious lips.
Oh, oh my gosh, did you really? No, you didn't.
No, 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 I did not. I was, I was hot mic'd. I was, I was saying hello.
Oh, that night, I remember. I heard that. We weren't talking to somebody else.
A significant other, a significant other after having not seen them for a few days.
So, I was like, oh, okay, and that was recorded.
I tell you, if I live long enough to see you in Congress, I'm going to be saying, luscious lips.
Well, I know there are others who've said far worse. So if that's the worst I've said, I think I'll be all right.
Yep.
I think so. All right.
Okay, guys, we'll see you in a half an hour.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Bye-bye.